They want to be the highest paid in Ontario.
Woodstock, Dr. Lowe.
Middle.
I think it's still pretty.
India, Santa Rosa.
With him a week ago.
I did get money back for it last year.
Yeah.
December at.
Don't work every day.
Oh, it's October, so you're in.
Like, they work 12-hour shifts.
Hi, Thomas, this is just a mic.
Yeah, they do, but it's like, it's weird how their shifts are.
The old individual you wrapped.
They've never made any sense to me.
I can hear you, yes.
Excellent, okay, the meeting will start soon, thanks.
Thank you.
He's the agent for the.
Oh, he's the agent for.
Yeah, we shouldn't.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 5th meeting of the Elmer Council. Begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you. Item three, confirmation of the agenda, we have a mover and seconder. Consulor DeSrozio, Consulor Ozlatch. Any additions, changes? Seeing none, all those in favor, let's carry it, thank you. Item four, reminder of, declare pecuniary interest if you have any. We have no delegations at public meetings. The next item is the 5.1, Committee of Adjustment. First, we need a resolution to recess and commence the Committee of Adjustment. Do we have a mover and seconder for recess? Consulor Chapman and Consulor Rowley. All those in favor, let's carry it. So, the clerk, want to read the items?
The Committee of Adjustment of the Town of Elmer is convened to consider application 04-24. Additional information relating to the applications is available for inspection between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. weekdays at Elmer Town Hall. Signed, written submissions are accepted by the Secretary Treasurer prior to or during the hearings, and such submissions shall be available for inspection by any interested party. If a party is notified but does not attend the hearing, the committee can proceed, and the party is not entitled to any further notice of hearings. Submissions or requests for notice can be sent to clerks@town.elmer.on.ca. A copy of the decision will be mailed to those persons who attend or are represented at the hearing, and those who have filed a written request with the secretary for notice of the committee's decision. The committee will hear input in the following order: presentation of the staff report by the manager of planning and development, agent or applicant, the public, staff and the clerk. Application 04-24 is made by 1000830270Ontario Inc. As the owner of the property municipally known as 110 Talbot Street West in the town of Elmer, the purpose of the variance is to remove the accessory building and construct in addition to the existing Gap Pump Island with canopy by adding an additional gas pump and construct an addition to the existing store including a residential dwelling unit on the proposed second story.
Thank you. The manager of planning and development, please provide her report.
Thank you, your worship. So, as mentioned, the variance before you tonight is to facilitate in addition to the existing, what's known as the existing SO gas station, which has a convenience store. So, what's happening is the building that fronts onto Regland Street, formerly known as 23 Regland Street, will be removed. 23 Regland Street and 110 Talbot Street used to be two legally separate parcels. Those two parcels have effectively merged together to create one parcel. So, the owner is removing that building that fronts under Regland Street in order to be able to add an additional gas pump to the existing gas pumps that are at the SO station, as well as extending the overhead canopy, as well as adding in addition to the existing convenience store and in addition to building a second story onto this convenience store to add a dwelling unit above it. So, essentially, what this variance will do, it will produce, it will permit a reduced front yard depth from 15 meters down to 5.6 meters. And I just want, it's important for me to draw your attention to the fact that the front yard is actually classified on Regland Street for this property. Because it's a corner lot, we have to take the smallest measurement along the street. The smallest measurement along the street is on Regland Street, not Talbot Street, so therefore the front yard fronts onto Regland. They're requesting for a reduction in the front yard setback from 15 meters to 5.6 meters, a reduced interior side yard from seven meters down to 4.9 meters, reducing the minimum landscape open space from 5% down to 4.5%, as well as recognizing the existing deficiencies in the exterior side yard setback, which is the side that abuts Talbot Street West, which is the existing setback of 8.2 meters, as well as the existing rear yard, which is what's in behind the car wash, of 1.5 meters. Figure one shows kind of an aerial photograph of the location of the property, and figure two shows the proposal for the development. I apologize for the quality of this, this is the engineering drawings that were provided to me. If anyone needs additional engineering drawings, I can provide them to them electronically, that is the best way to view this. The application was circulated to town staff for comment. Town staff had no concerns with the files. It's important to note that should this variance be approved, the owner will be required to enter into a site plan approval agreement with the town. Any engineering comments from town staff will be provided, resolved through the site plan approval process. The application was also circulated to all neighboring property owners within 60 meters of the lands, and at the time of submission of this report, no comments were received. As well, the application was circulated to public agencies, and the public agencies had no concerns. Moving on to the four tests of this minor variance, the first test, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan? And yes, it does. The property is designated arterial commercial. This type of land use permits the existing uses on the property, that being a gas station, convenience store, as well as the proposed dwelling unit on the second story. The second test, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? And yes, it does, the property is currently zoned, support commercial, which permits a variety of commercial uses such as the uses that are at this property, as well as it also permits the proposed dwelling unit on the second story. So, essentially, we provide minimums for front yard depths, essentially to provide sufficient area between the front lot line and the road allowance of a property to allow for the safe ingress and egress of vehicular traffic. We also establish interior side yards with, in order to provide adequate buffering between properties. As well, we also require a minimum landscape open space area on a lot for stormwater management primarily. I'm of the opinion that with these proposed exceptions requested, all of these areas are being identified and that the proposal meets all the other C2 zone requirements. The third test, is the variance requested desirable for the appropriately appropriate and orderly development and use of the lands and the buildings? And yes, it is. It's important to note the proposed reduction in the required front yard will be utilizing the same front yard setback as the existing gas pump island has already, so it's not encroaching any further into the front yard than what you would currently see right now with where the gas pumps are situated on the property. The proposed reduction in the interior side yard width will have no impact on the adjacent land use, that being an alleyway, which is owned by the town. And lastly, the decrease in landscape open space will have a minimal impact. As I mentioned, this property will be subject to site plan approval, and as part of the site plan approval process, we will be requiring stormwater management review as a part of this development. Planning staff are satisfied that the variance will facilitate an appropriate use of the property. And the fourth and final test, is the variance considered minor in nature? Yes, it is. The variance will have a minimal impact with respect to the environment, municipal functions, and the surrounding property owners. So, in conclusion, it's planning staff's opinion that the proposed application for minor variance is desirable for the appropriate. minor variance is desirable for the appropriate development and use of the property, and meets the intent and purpose of the official plan, policies and zoning bylaw regulations, and that I'm recommending for the proposed application for the minor variance, A04-24 be approved, subject to no concerns coming forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Next item is the applicant present. If so, do they wish to speak?
For virtual.
Agent present? I believe there's an agent online.
Hi, my name is Thomas Lucas. I'm the applicant on file. I work for SL10 Engineering, be prepared, the sign drawings. I don't have any questions. I appreciate your time and efforts, and I appreciate the support from all the members.
Item five, there was, I didn't hear that totally. Is there any follow-up on the comment? No follow-up, thank you. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, if so, you approach the podium and give us your name.
Hi there, I'm Mary Lynn McPherson, and I'm here representing Cherry Street Not-for-Profit Housing Corporation. And Cherry Street owns the property on the other side of the laneway that the town owns. So, on the south side, it used to be owned by Dirkies, that property. So, there's Cherry Street owns the Dirkie property, and two houses that front onto Center Street. So, we have no concerns. We really just wanted to come to express our approval that there's more housing going to be available as a result of this particular application, because Cherry Street, in due course, hopes to develop on that southern property, higher density housing, to relieve some of the housing pressures that there are in the community. So, just really wanted to say, yes, we're supportive, and we'll be back here sometime in the future, looking for some approvals as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come to council and give us your views on this. Item six, were there any members of the public that you know of beyond this?
No, no members of the public have otherwise requested.
Any additional communications?
We have not.
Counsel, any comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. To Heather or to the applicant? Clarification on the accessory building. There is a wood-type structure. I don't know what it's being used for, I don't know, 12 feet by something that's adjacent to the laneway access to the car wash. That isn't the accessory building that we're talking about.
Through you, your worship? No, the accessory building I'm referring to in my report that's being removed is the property that was known as 23 Regland Street. It's a kind of a brick building, one level, very close to the street on Regland Street. So, it's directly just south of where the gas pump island is right now.
Is that Guns and Gadgets?
Yes, or formerly, I'm not.
Formerly, yes.
Yes. That is the building that I refer to in the report as the accessory building that is being removed in order to allow for the gas pump addition to occur.
Okay, just a clarification, then. The wood-type structure that's there doesn't show on anything. Is it permissible?
Let me just pull up the drawings that were submitted here, just one moment. The site plan drawing that I have, that you have before you, is not showing that little wooden structure whatever, or whatsoever. That is the area that's being removed, or sorry, that's the area that's being added on to, where you see that little wooden structure, that I believe there's a car being parked there by, I believe, the operator of the gas station. That's being removed to allow for that addition to the convenience store to occur.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, just Rosie.
I was just going to follow up, or thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to follow up on Deputy Mayor Barber's comment, looking at the drawings, the yellow area there, the existing shelter to be demolished to accommodate that addition onto the store, as well as the residential above. So, as Heather just mentioned, I think we are in confirmation that it is being removed, which I think is a positive thing. I've always had concerns with that shelter. So, I think this is, optimistically, this is going to be a lot more visually appealing and more, in my opinion, structurally sound. So, I think this is a great thing, and I definitely support this. Thank you.
Any other comment or discussion from counsel? Seeing none, we'll now consider the following resolution. Owen?
That report Plan 17-24, Planning Evaluation Report, respecting the application for minor variance, A4-24, 110 Talbot Street West be received, and that the application for minor variance, A4-24, seeking relief from Section 153 as follows: the front yard depth minimum, automobile service station of 5.1, or sorry, 5.6 meters; two, the interior side yard width minimum, automobile service station of 4.9 meters; the existing exterior side yard width of 8.2 meters; and the existing rear yard depth minimum of 5.1 meters; and, five, the landscaped open minimum space automobile service station of 4.5% be approved.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, moved by Deputy Mayor Barber, seconded by Consulor Dussosier. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor is carried. Thank you. Now, we'll have a resolution to adjourn the committee.
That the Committee of Adjustment meeting does now close, and counsel reconvene at 7:16 p.m.
Mover and seconder, Consulor Chapman and Consulor Ozlatch, all those in favor, carried. Now, we'll go back to the regular council agenda. Item six, which is a consent agenda, is there a resolution?
Yes, that the June 5th, 2024 consent agenda be received for information, and that the included recommendations within the staff report be adopted, and that the council approves the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on May 15th, 2024.
Note that consent agenda includes all of the communications and all of the minutes. Mover and seconder, Consulor Chapman and Consulor Rohi. Discussion? Consulor Rohi.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't know who it goes to, but it'd be 611, and it's the donation receipt for the Project Lifesaver Fund. I was just curious if we would ever see like a breakdown of where that money goes to, or does it just disappear into the pot of the Project Lifesaver Fund?
I don't know if I have a total answer to that. I think that Consulor Van Rees, he did explain the money when he was here last, he's not here this evening, but are you talking about the total amount for Project Lifesaver?
Yeah, it's just that I'm wondering what it was actually doing.
I don't know, is anyone? We'll have, I think we'll have Consulor Van Rees kind of speak to that at the next meeting. Got fun? Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor, carried. Thank you. Item seven, action item 7.1, the manager of Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan Implementation.
That report Recreation 8-24, entitled Parks and Recreation Master Plan Implementation be received as information, and that council approve the implementation strategy as outlined in the report, and further that staff be directed to include monetized recreation software and adjustments to staffing levels for the 2025 Finance Committee consideration.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, Consulor Dussosier and Consulor Chapman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to counsel. This report serves as an update report to CAO 5623 that was presented to counsel in September. At that time, counsel directed staff to return with an update to the master plan, and I'm pleased to present a proposed implementation strategy for counsel tonight. So, this implementation strategy relates directly to the recommendations from the master plan, and staff are committed to ensuring that this document remains a vital source, a vital resource in planning for future, for the future of Parks and Recreation, rather than sitting on a shelf. The intention is to keep this plan relevant and start building an even more active and engaged Elmer from it. It's evident to staff through community consultation, paired with recommendations from the master plan, that Elmer is an active and engaged community. The expectations of recreation facilities and community programs are high, and residents are engaged and do provide that feedback when approached and have the opportunity. Staff have listened to the community. We've held some open public consultation sessions since January, and have had some great feedback to support this implementation strategy as well. So, throughout the report and towards the end, you'll see some key items for consideration. And we're looking to address the needs of the residents by modernizing the recreation software system that currently exists, and reviewing the Parks and Recreation staffing complement to further enhance the program offerings, and both of which I'll talk about a little deeper in the report. So, you might have to get out the hook if I get too involved. This is exciting for me in recreation. So, the purpose of the report tonight is, as I had mentioned, to provide a recommended implementation strategy of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for council approval, so we can work towards accomplishing some of the great goals within the master plan. So, as a refresher, the master plan identifies priorities as short, mid, and long-term priorities. The short term really are actionable items identified as critical items, items to be addressed within one to three years of the adoption of the report, midterm from four to six, and long-term priorities within seven to 10 years of the adoption of the plan. So, it's important to note, as I've listed in the report, that this is a lifting, a living document, so staff are cognizant to shift priorities or reallocate resources as trends change or funding becomes available. It is a fluid document, or as you know, political desires may change. So, the focus on this report, I've mentioned it here, and I won't go into it in great depth, but there are six categories identified within the master plan. Overall, there are about 68 recommendations for the community for Parks and Recreation in the plan, 23 of which are identified as short-term priorities, and I'm going to drill down on those a little bit more, a little bit more in this implementation strategy. So, it's important to note to counsel, and I think it's important as a staff team, that we work collaboratively, so we can ensure Parks and Recreation are represented in strategic documents, both internally and external documents, legislation, any strat planning exercises we have, to make sure that we're all in alignment and recreation is being represented. There's evidence from even the budget survey that recreation is important to the community, and we're hoping to build off of that. So, to address, we're looking to address the short-term priorities while managing operational work plans. So, to do that, based, because there are 23 short-term priorities, I've broken those into three phases, so we can address these as manageable and achievable chunks, if you will. So, we can really take a strategic approach to finding some actionable items and some achievable items, so we can show that we are producing results from this important document that was created for and by the community. You'll see within there as well, I've listed three phases within the short-term priorities, as well as an ongoing phase before you tonight. Those ongoing items listed in the master plan are really important operational items that need to be, need to not disappear. So, they're not a start-and-finish project, but important to the successful operations of a Parks and Rec business. So, if we look to the first phase, the timeline of priorities for 2024, I'm happy to report that there are some achievements to report to counsel, some good news stories from here, and some also, some items to highlight. So, the first item listed is transitioning to a modernized recreation payment and registration system. So, basically, this will help improve the user experience, help mitigate duplication and staff time. Modernized recreation systems provide opportunities to speak to our financial systems, so we don't have to, you know, take our data and put it into our financial systems to produce outcomes. There's some really great data and analytics that can be derived from new software that exists, and also some neat engagement tools, so some surveys that can go directly to our users, and produce a really neat user experience. So, folks in their smartphone, if they're at the ballpark watching their kids play a sport, they can register for a rec program, a drop-in class, they can pay, they can show up, we can avoid the cash handling, things like that. There's some really, some really exciting and interesting opportunities. Our current system is working. It's kind of a pay-per-module system, but this really will take us to the next level, and it'll help us in our promotion of our programming. So, that's something to look for, hopefully, in the 2025 Finance Committee deliberations. So, the focus on the 2024 priorities really is the online, to investigate the online booking system. We haven't focused on capital improvements in this phase, but really building those partnerships, focusing on understanding what the needs of the users are in the community, building relationships with our community partners, and really taking a solid look at the inventory of the programs and services that are offered in Elmer right now, so that we can make sure that we're providing the community what's needed, so we're not duplicating what's being done in the public or private sector. We can add capacity to our local community groups, or help fill the gaps where needed through our programming. The next phase from 2025 to 2026 that I'm projecting, or suggesting, rather, focuses on, really focuses on trails, parklands, playgrounds, connectivity, so making sure we can move people in an active and healthy way around Elmer, through Elmer, while they're engaging with their community. So, this will be making sure that recreation is in the forefront of development and considered, so parklands, trails, its playgrounds, making sure that we have that equity distribution, so making sure that we're connecting, working collaboratively within our staff team and the community. So, if we move to this, the third phase of implementing our short-term priorities, this takes us into 2026, 2027, so the end of the short-term phase. This is where we're looking again to make, to ensure there's equity in the parks, looking towards, looking to some seniors, active seniors facilities, so whether that's outdoor fitness equipment, investigating indoor seniors programming, ensuring that our outdoor amenities, outdoor recreation amenities are appropriate for youth, and again, making sure that we're keyed into our parkland distribution strategies. So, if, as I mentioned before, some of the ongoing priority items you'll see listed on this next slide before you here, these are key items to make sure that our business is running efficiently, that we're staying in touch with the community, and we're listening to our residents, and that we're also responsible to the ratepayers. Anything new, programs, services, amenities, facilities that we are looking to, looking to implement or to consider, that we have a cost-benefit analysis, that there's thorough thought in there, that we're making sure that we can investigate opportunities to reduce the burden to the ratepayers by investigating grant opportunities that are out there, and keeping recreation affordable and accessible as it should be, and inclusive of all communities. It's really exciting to connect with our volunteers, to help build capacity as well, and we've had some great, even this week, we've had a great example of that, working with our local community in our high school in beautifying Balmoral Park. So, we're hoping to, hoping to continue some of that great work. So, those ongoing items there are just, just to make sure that they're sort of outside, but you'll see those repeated in future reports as we come back here. So, the key items for consideration that I had mentioned before, the first priority is the modernization of our recreation-based software system. So, transitioning to an online booking payment and registration system. So, the customer experience is improved, which will then take, free up some of our admin time to focus on additional tasks. If folks can inquire about renting a facility or book a pavilion, which we're seeing great uptake in recently, book a facility online. great uptake in recently, book a, book a facility online, make their payment and have their receipt sent to their email, these, these systems are pretty exciting. Our current system does have some limitations that doesn't permit, doesn't permit folks to complete transactions without, without actually being in touch with the staff, having that physical transaction or actually coming on site to, to do that. The current system also doesn't communicate with our financial system, so that creates a little bit of extra, extra work for our staff on the backend. So we're hoping that an upgraded system will include these functionalities that can have a reduction in, in staff time while improving the user experience. So we're hoping that, that we're, we're planning to include this item for consideration on the 2025 capital budget. So hopefully this will not be a surprise when it comes, when it comes to budget time. The next key item for consideration is reviewing staff allocations so we can meet the goals of the master plan. So it's, it's important to note that there are a number of recommendations regarding, relating directly to community recreation programming. And we've got very limited staff to do so. So our offerings, our current offerings that we have are limited to our public skating, very passive use, drop-in programs, pickleball, shuffleboard, some annual community events. And then our passive use, our trails, our parks and whatnot. We're hearing from the community that they'd like more. They'd like organized activities, whether it's drop-in, programming for children, for youth, for active adults, for seniors, whether that's a fitness class or, you know, a series of children's workshops, drop-in opportunities for seniors. We're hearing that our residents do have that expectation of services that we're, we currently have identified a gap in our, in our staffing complement to be able to provide that. We've got a great, hardworking Parks and Recreation staff who are currently deployed, deployed to, to take care of our operational needs of our facilities and our amenities in town. But it's important to identify that we have that gap and that experience to be able to provide that recreation programming. So it wouldn't be as easy as redeploying one staff from one area to another area. It would be really looking to, you know, make the best sense of our staffing complement to be able to address the needs of the community, finding, you know, providing that resource. The master plan is, is in line with, with trends in recreation in that our volunteers are key to running amazing events and that's demonstrated through, you know, the barbecue happening at the, the complex tonight. It's, it's pretty amazing. So how staff play a role in that and community recreation programming is we're happy to work ourselves out of a job often. We look forward to it. So how, working with volunteer groups and community organizations or just passionate people to implement a new activity, a new program, building capacity in those volunteers through our experience and then kind of giving them wings and sending them out into the community so we, we have that staff time and resource to go and help build something else. And before you know it, you have a vibrant community that's, that's addressing a bunch of needs through, through some staff, some staff resource. So it is a wonderful community development model that I think would work in Elmer, but we are, we are missing that key experience to, to kind of be boots on the ground to make that happen. So that will be another, that'll be another item. This is a sneak peek to the 2025, some, some items for consideration that will be before you. So I think staffing resources, I could mention, have been conservatively allocated in the past, which reflects favorably on the budget. And I think we've done a really good job allocating those resources to manage our amenities to get to that next level and give the folks what's, what's indicated in the master plan. I think, I think we need to, to take a deep dive into that. So, so you'll see that upcoming. So in conclusion, staff have, have approached the implementation, implementation of the rec master plan with a focus on community recreation programming rather than capital items as, as it's been an identified gap in service. And as I had mentioned, the strategy will be further reflected in budget exercises for 2025. We're very confident in the ability to, to accomplish the goals in the, of the implementation plan and further request support of council, of the recommendations within, within the report before you tonight. And I'm happy to, to answer any questions. Thank you.
No, thank you, Suzy. Counsel? Counselor DeRozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions here, so I guess I'll list them off. The playground review and assessment that's done in phase one, would we see any tangible capital upgrades or development from that phase item or would it simply be more research and development? The other question I have is phase three, explore additional outdoor amenities for youth. There is two specific items within the short-term list from the master study that we had done. And number 17 was additional playgrounds and number 23 was the addition of amenities for teens. So I wanted to know was, was this item in phase three, does it cover both 17 and 23 or one specifically? And the last question I have is regarding the additional staffing complement of a recreation coordinator. We currently have a staff member whose specific title is a Parks and Recreation Coordinator. So what is the difference between that staff, that member that we currently already have and the one that this report is suggesting? Thank you.
Through you, your worship. You may have to help me, Councilor DeRozier, if I miss a piece of that. That was action-packed, but I'll do my best to, to address that. So just give me a nudge if, if I need to backtrack on something. So those are great questions and I, I think, I think we're on the same page here. So, so basically phase one, so 2024, when I talk about playground review, so this is when we're not getting into big capital items. It's June. This is, this is the time to really review what we've, what we've got. So I think I've got this listed to review in Q3, review what we have, what we need going forward so that we can sit and include items that are relevant or, or necessary to include in the 2025 budget. So there may be some capital items coming down the pike when it comes to that. So that could very well be part and parcel with your question about outdoor amenities for youth as well. So having, having mentioned before that this is a living and a fluid document, so if there's an envelope of funding available for outdoor recreation focused, you know, on youth engagement, we'll for sure shift that to another priority. Or if it's a playground that can be, you know, intergenerational or have a focus on, on youth, we'll certainly, we'll certainly bring that into the fold. So I think it's important when we're, when we're reviewing the playgrounds that it won't just be based on the needs of, of children necessarily, that we're going to keep those outdoor amenities, you know, for active adults, seniors and, and, and teens in mind too. If that answer is kind of a part of, does that, is that okay? All right. Good. Good. And then the, the question about the, the position, did I miss anything in your other question?
No, you're good.
Okay.
You're a rock star, Suzy.
Feel free to jump in. So the question about the staffing complement, we do have a Parks and Recreation Coordinator right now and her focus is largely administrative. So when it comes to ice allocation, ball diamond allocation, permits, things like that, this position does, does facilitate some special events. So helps with the administration and the, the function of special events, but it's really key. So this position specifically, if we were to transition to a new rec software system, would be a really key stakeholder, a really key staff position in making that successful and, and would, would use a bunch of that staff resource. So really it is an administratively heavy position right now. That doesn't really lend a lot of capacity to be flexible and mobile to offer recreation programming. So a community recreation programmer or coordinator that I've got listed in the report and that the title is, is flexible and fluid, but needs to be identifiable, identifiable enough so that we can differentiate. So administrative functions, whether they happen Monday to Friday, eight to four, or they shift based on recreational needs, would be different from the needs of a community recreation programmer or coordinator. So recreation really needs to happen outside of banker's hours. So when people go home, they have an expectation of looking for, you know, an activity for my, my children or, you know, there's a weekend event that I want to go to. So something that we can be a bit more flexible with that and someone with the experience too of, of having developed, implemented, facilitated recreation programs for all ages and abilities. So someone who, or, you know, a candidate in this position would be someone who's, has had experience with, with seniors programming. We know our demographic is, is trending that way. So offering programming, you know, active and passive programming for, for seniors. So it's not all, you know, we, we corner the market really well on youth sports. We've got the facilities, we've got a vibrant cultural community, we've got some, some neat opportunities there, but something that can really be inclusive of the community and offer some of those, just having the experience in running some children's programming. So our, our current staffing complement, basically their, their position doesn't have that expectation within it, if that makes sense, Counselor DeRozier. So it would be important to have someone who can focus on, on those, on delivering those, those community programs.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll come back to you, Counselor DeRozier, give somebody else a chance.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, you, Mayor Barber?
Thank you, your worship. To Suzy, you mentioned several times that the master plan is a living, breathing document. The people of this community are hoping, they're expecting that this program, this document, this, this vision is not going to be sitting on a shelf gathering dust. It's going to take a lot of folks to make it happen. Counsel, staff and the community. Are you confident that we can get there?
Through you, your worship. Thank you for that question. Absolutely. I'm excited to, to come to council tonight with, with some deliverables already. And in having communicated with, with some folks and some user groups, the, the desire is, the desire is there. We have a really solid master plan to back that. And what's also exciting to me in my position is having a supportive council who, who identifies recreation as a priority. So that's, that's job one. That makes life a little bit easier in itself. I think, and I think it is important to, to make sure that we monitor the reports so that there's consistent reports to council. So if priorities do shift and, and constituents have, have communicated needs or expressed interest that it'll come to staff through council. So I am confident in the plan. I think it's a great plan. We'll just make, have to make sure that we're planning through our, you know, our business plans and our, and our budgets to get there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have a comment on this, Rob?
Thank you, your worship. I did. I want to acknowledge all the work that Suzy has put into this, development of this implementation plan for council. She really saw the plan and sort of really hit the ground, running on meeting with the community, finding out what they need, where they want us to go. So all of that background work was part of this implementation strategy for council tonight. We're in a bit of a sweet spot. If you remember, the budget we're going to go into next year also includes a huge pool liner for, but for the, for the, the council to consider. So we're kind of lucky that we're a few steps away from needing capital in our, to implement our, our plan. What the community has met with Suzy and their great volunteers out there, they're looking for us to kind of help them get organized. They've got a lot of great people. We're missing a component, a programming coordinator that can meet with those people and get it organized. And then the other component is the software. Right now where, where I am, I can register and go to the pickleball within 20 minutes of, of registering for the program. That's kind of key. So assuming that council is in favor of this, Suzy's implementation strategy, if, if we kind of agree in principle, we'll put all the missing parts together and show back up at the budget. So okay, if we need some software, it's this. If we need a, a part-time program or a full-time program, it's going to cost this. But if we're not happy with the ways Suzy has laid it out, having met with everybody, then we, we need to go back and revisit that. But I'm pretty confident that you've got some great community people out there that are just looking for the town to kind of get organized and give them sort of some missing pieces of that puzzle. That's great because our capital budget would then be maybe two years down the road or we can include all the playground equipment in this year if council wants. But we're kind of in a bit of a sweet spot with the programming we're behind and we can maybe get organized by just leveraging our volunteers that are already out there. I think is what Suzy's hearing.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions, then I'll go back to Counselor DeRozier because I know she has some other questions. Suzy, you mentioned two items which are kind of time-sensitive and you've been, everybody's been kind of talking about, the booking software and the boots on the ground. Both of those are time-sensitive items in terms of making this happen. I believe that the, the finance committee is meeting very soon. I think the next, the next meeting. Will we have numbers dealing with these items at the finance committee?
Thank you, your worship. I've been communicating with the Director of Finance and, and we intend to have information for review.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DeRozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up from the response for the one question regarding the staff addition. I'm not 100% sold on it still just because of already having that staff member who is sort of the coordinator title, but also as well as the sales pitch to council for the new Parks and Recreation Manager was that they would have the skillset to develop recreational programming. So I'm still a little confused about that, but I am open to receiving that report from staff at our finance committee meeting to kind of go over that a little bit more in detail. The other thing I just wanted to mention was that personally for me, the improvements and additions to playground inventory are a priority. According to our master plan that we got done, number 17 is that the town is currently in a deficit of two playgrounds. So I think having those, developing those plans and having those assessments done is essential because I don't know if anybody else saw, but the town of Elderton just received a $150,000 Ontario Trillion Foundation grant for a new playground. And if those opportunities are available to this community, I would like to capitalize on that to combat that deficit. Thank you.
Thank you. Good points. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for that report. As I've seen no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion, as carried. Thank you. Item 7.2, Director of Legislate Services, Housekeeping Amendments to the Elmer Procedural Bylaw Resolution.
That report, Clerk 16-24, regarding Housekeeping Amendments to the Elmer Procedural Bylaw, be received as information and that council approve the proposed updates to the procedural bylaw and direct staff to bring forward an amending bylaw at the June 19th meeting of council.
Moving second, Deputy Mayor Barber, Counselor Chapman. No one?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So this report simply regards Housekeeping Amendments to the Elmer Procedural Bylaw. You've had these reports before you in the past. We like to do routine reviews of the procedural bylaw to make sure that we're following best practices that we observe in other municipalities. So the primary aims of these amendments are to enhance meeting efficiency and limit the topics of delegations that can be presented to council to ensure that they're focused on matters within council's jurisdiction and areas of influence. So the key amendments include limiting delegations to topics within council's jurisdiction, prohibiting delegations on sensitive topics such as labor relations, litigation, election campaigning and commercial advertising, ensuring that confidential matters are protected and, and are not discussed in delegations, preventing council being, having to revisit decisions through delegations which they've already made decisions on, as well as restricting any premature discussions on matters that have been referred by council to staff for future staff reports. These changes do reflect best practices that we've observed in other municipalities and we're making these recommendations proactively to just ensure that the procedural bylaw meets council's needs. And with that, I can take any questions.
Counsel? Counselor DeRozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, more a statement. I just want to make sure that these revisions don't act as a discouragement for delegations. I think public delegations are a valuable tool for council. So as it mentioned in the report, should a member of the public have a concern with a delegation request, I encourage them to speak to a member of council.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, as carried. Thank you. Item 7.3, Director of Operations, Bulk Fill Rate Resolution.
That report, Operations 18-24, respecting bulk fill rates, be received as information and that council endorse the inclusion of a bulk fill water rate in the 2020 and that Council Endorse the Inclusion of a Bulk Water Rate in the 2025. Water rates as outlined in the report.
Moving on to Secondar, moved by Councillor Hayes, again by Councillor Chapman. Rob?
Thank you, Your Worship. As council is aware, you have a regulatory obligation to set a financial plan for the water system to make sure it's self-sustaining and self-funding. With the inclusion of the new bulk fill station at the tower, we don't currently have a rate for that. So, staff did a little bit of a research, and we think we have what is a reasonable number for a cubic meter rate for our bulk fill station, just by a quick survey of surrounding areas. And we're suggesting that that meets the regulatory obligation for council, just to include that rate in our upcoming annual water rate bylaw that happens in sort of November. You'll recall, our water rates are done, they're regulated by the ministry, they have to be done every, I think it's seven years, done by an economist who usually does it. If council's not sort of happy with the way we've done the estimate, we would reach back out to the economist to give us a rate, but it doesn't seem cost-effective to kind of do that. I would suggest that we could include this bulk water rate in the next time we do our water rates, and probably it wouldn't even be part of the cost, like it wouldn't even influence what the bid was. And then we would have data at that time, too, that we could give the economist to figure out the rate for us. So, we kind of think this satisfies our regulatory obligation and allows us to get some data to be able to do the next rate when we do it formally.
Thank you. Council? Okay, no comments from council. All those in favor, carried. Thank you. Item 7.4, Chief Administrative Officer Dealing with Wireless Installations Resolution.
That Report CAO 32-24 Respecting Wireless Installations on Municipal Property Policy Be Received as Information, and that Council Adopt the Proposed Wireless Installation on Municipal Property Policy, and that Council Direct Staff to Provide Notice to Parties with Infrastructure on the Town's Existing Water Tower Storage Facility, that the location will be discontinued in coordination with the town's new water tower.
Moving on to Secondar, Councillor Ozlach, Councillor Roy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So, this report seeks to establish a policy for installations primarily of telecommunications equipment on municipal property. This represents a new policy for the town. We didn't have an existing one previously. There's one existing agreement that we signed a number of years ago that charged $2 for this to one company. Most of the other installations on the water tower are related to our own operations, such as the secondary water board, or fire, or police services. So, we wouldn't be recovering revenue from that. We did review policies of other municipalities. Given that Elmer is kind of surrounded by predominantly rural lands, the fees that we are suggesting are significantly lower than what was in these other policies. A lot of the policies come from the Toronto area. So, we took about half of the fee as a rule of thumb. There is still a potential, though, for this to serve as a significant revenue source, particularly if a provider wished to utilize the new water tower. The town hasn't had any interest expressed to date in a new installation at the water tower, but you can imagine it's significantly cheaper for service providers to build onto our infrastructure, rather than purchase land and build a tower themselves. So, there is a big incentive for companies, if they want to have increased cellular range, to look for these opportunities. And we just want to make sure we have the policy in place. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions of council.
Council? Seeing no questions, all those in favor, carried. Item 7.5, Administrative Officer, Wide Area Network Resolution.
That Report CAO 33-24 Respecting Wide Area Network Economic Development Opportunity Be Received as Information, and that Council Provide Direction to Staff to, upon proceeding to an issue, issue a request for expression of interest process for a wide area network.
Moving on to Secondar, Councillor Chapman, Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report seeks to utilize the town's procurement process for a wide area network, to provide an incentive to internet service providers to introduce high-speed fiber to the town. Town staff have been trying for the last several years to get widespread fiber implementation into the town. We believe it's very close to occurring. However, we're presenting a unique approach to council, if you want to provide an additional kind of push, to see if we can make that happen and try to dictate a bit of the timelines for it. Municipalities usually are prevented from providing bonuses to businesses. However, in this case, by using our procurement of SCADA network connectivity, along with our municipal facilities connecting, we could provide an incentive to provide broader, to encourage broader installations in the community. There's also the potential for council to determine if they wanted to provide a grant, say, from the council initiatives reserve. This would allow council to have more insight and say into residential connections, and kind of the scope, and even potentially look at what the proposed rates for such services would be for the community prior to awarding. There's a lot of unknowns at this point, so we're suggesting a non-binding expression of interest process. This will allow us to engage and have discussions with internet service providers, and really refine exactly what we're going to look for when we go into procurement. And we're doing this because normally, if we have those types of discussions before we issue a procurement, we would eliminate every single vendor that we talked with. So, we're going to look at this and try to have a broad dialogue with them, to figure out what is possible and what we can do. And then we'll bring that back to council before we reward. So, you'll see the final options. This is just to get that initial process and say that we're not opposed to that kind of concept of looking at this. Staff do believe that access to high-speed fiber connections is really an economic development issue for a lot of communities. People want it, businesses want it, when they come to a community. So, if we can provide it and, you know, slightly increase our capital cost on a project to make that happen, it is probably a good thing for the community for us to try to do that. So, really, this is just a creative, different approach to try to make something happen that we know the community's really been pushing for for some time. So, with that, I'll try to answer any questions of council.
Council? Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, as carried. Item 7.6, Chief Administrative Officer Roundtable Meeting Old Town Hall Resolution.
That Report CAO 31-24 Respecting the Roundtable Meeting at the Old Town Hall Be Received as Information, and that Staff Be Directed to Present Terms of Reference for a Advisory Committee for Council's Consideration, and that Staff Be Directed to Investigate the Town Providing Insurance Coverage to Groups Utilizing the Old Town Hall.
Moving on to Secondar, Councillor Chapman, Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Old Town Hall meeting was held in May and was well-intended. Staff got a lot of interesting input. There were a couple clear takeaways. The first was to research the town covering insurance for groups using the facility. The next was to establish an advisory committee to work on a vision for the facility for its future. There was significant discussion on the library. So, we have, what we have proposed here is including some further assessments in our annual budget survey. Last term of council, the library was placed on the budget survey, and what we saw was that the community was extremely divided on this issue. As an outcome, the direction that currently is on the books is for the town to wait until significant grassroots fundraising occurs, before we invest energy into this area. My intention in relating that is not to get into a broader discussion tonight about the library. I just wanted to acknowledge that it was, it was an issue raised at this town hall meeting, and as a result, you know, it is fair for the town to put it on our next budget survey, see what kind of background we get, what further information, and bring that back to councils to give you more information. Overall, it's fair to say that there's going to be a lot of challenges with the Old Town Hall that will likely need to be addressed. A lot of them will need to be addressed probably early in the next term of council. Some of these are outlined in the facility condition assessment that's attached to the report. Staff believe that now is the time to start working with the community and to develop a plan, and hopefully to also increase the utilization of Old Town Hall. So, this is really a first step in what will be an ongoing dialogue. There are components of this issue that will be short and longer-term. However, if we get ahead of it now and start addressing it, then the bigger issues will hopefully start to solve themselves, and will start to form those relationships that can find some solutions to long-term issues that face Old Town Hall. And with that, oh, certainly I'd like to thank Owen for attending, and the council members that were able to make it for attending as well. It was very informative and helpful to have you there. So, with that, I'll try to answer any questions council might have.
Council? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Your Worship. It was an interesting meeting in the respect that the, it's acknowledged that the challenge is to get more people inside the building, into a multitude of different events. I hope that if there is an advisory committee that is able to focus into, how can we make that happen? What would be an advantage to having more people inside? How are we going to do that? And that, there were a couple of small things that we can do. Putting a lock on the thermostats was one thing that was mentioned, to stop the public from upping and downing the temperature within the facility. It's an easy fix. But moving on from that, as long as we're doing something, moving forward, I think is critical.
Anyone else? Councillor Chapman?
The number of people that attended the meeting is a really good sign that the community wants the town hall to be utilized. And if we can find a way to make that happen, it's time to do so.
Thank you. A comment, looking at the way the meeting happened, Andy and Councillor Chapman worked all together as teachers in terms of, quite effective to see. You sit back and watch them at work. Certainly, there was a great deal of discussion, and I noticed there was a member of the public here earlier, and that person left. I think that person wanted to speak, but I wouldn't, this is not the place for the members of the public to speak, so there are other ways. So, I'm addressing that person. She's not here anymore, but certainly, give me a call, we can talk about it, or we can set up some other way for the public to kind of have input. But usually during council meetings, the public doesn't speak in, to resolution. So, I just wanted to say that, because the person has now left. Anyway, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, as carried. Thank you. Item 7.7, Chief Administrative Officer AMO Delegation Resolution.
That Report CAO 34-24 Respecting the 2024 AMO Delegation Be Received as Information, and that Council Endorse the Town Applying for Delegations as Outlined in the Report, CAO 34-24.
Moving on to Secondar, Councillor Chapman and Councillor Ozlach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the deadline for filing AMO delegations is this Friday. AMO this year is in Ottawa, so although we're recommending that we file on these items, it's certainly a valid option for the council to say that they don't want to make delegations. We won't be offended at staff if you want to pass this year. But we did come up with some ideas for potential items that we could delegate on. Boundary adjustments, this is one that we've delegated on at AMO before and Roma. In the context of this, we're suggesting a slightly different approach to talk about, you know, the need for the province to consider an expedited process for boundary adjustments when there's clear planning justification. So, we're not talking specifically about our situation, but our situation's a good example of Elmer having a geographic deficiency that is very clear. And certainly, a lot of the boundary adjustments that go on in the province are large municipalities looking to amass more land than when they have probably sufficient land already. That's not the case here, so it really does put a stymie on municipalities when they need land, and it limits economic development for all communities if that isn't done. Again, though, I think it's stated in the report, we do anticipate we're going to make headway on our issue. So, again, it's not something that's critical, but it's an interesting item that we could propose as part of a delegation. Another item that we have is planning authority. In recent years, the province has started to implement regional governments, losing, the upper tier losing their planning authority, and the lower tier having planning authority. This is kind of a novel approach. They've also done it in some county systems already. So, what we're suggesting is that the province may want to consider doing that in Elgin County. You know, there are many systems where county planning authority is done very effectively, but it has to be resourced properly, and they have to get involved in subdivisions and condos. And oftentimes, you know, after it's approved, we do the lion's share of the work after that. So, it is suggesting that there is some potential delays from having the upper tier involved that could be removed if we went with that. So, that's another interesting approach that we could make. The next one would be requesting that the Ministry of Municipal Affairs make regional representation reviews part of the county system. So, if you have a regional government system, they're required to do representation reviews every two elections. In the county system, that doesn't work. So, you've got counties, some that have gone on for more than 30 or 40 years, and they've never actually done a representation review of their county officials. So, for lower tiers, it really is an issue of ensuring electoral fairness. If you don't do those types of things on a regular, routine basis, it can get out of whack. And I certainly think it's been allowed at the county system, because growth in counties is usually slower. But certainly, what we're seeing now is growth accelerating. So, and I think there's a lot of other county systems that are also seeing growth accelerated. So, there should be, whether it's once every two terms, once every three terms, they should have some system in place for that to be required at the county level. And then the final is something that I think every municipality wants to delegate upon, is just a new municipal, a new financial deal for municipalities. Certainly, if we went with that one, we'd likely be in a delegation with about 10 other municipalities. So, I don't think Elmer would take the lead in it. We'd probably just sit back and lend our voice to whoever is most vocal. But those are some options, and certainly, we're open to anything that council would also want to, or delegate on. I think there's a limit of four delegation requests that you can make, so you'd have to take one off the list.
And we were very fortunate the last time to get all three of our requests accepted for a town our size, so that was very good. Council, questions or comments? Councillors Derozier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple questions. So, who exactly would be attending this conference, is the first question. And secondly, the conference being in Ottawa, what is the projected cost for this? As I'm sure there'll be travel, meals, accommodations, registration fees within that cost. So, if I could get those two answered, or questions to answer, that'd be great.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think currently, right now, I think I would be the only individual who's planning to attend. And certainly, one of the reasons why I suggested that we might want to go is that I have family in Ottawa. So, it would be registration cost, travel. I think my mom will feed me when I'm down there, unless I'm out at a meeting. So, it would be fairly affordable. I haven't looked into what the registration cost was. I think it was $1,000, $1,200 last time. Within the staff training budget, there's sufficient funds within that. The challenge becomes council's, pretty much expend council's training budget, which is a part of the challenge.
I think a ballpark gager would be $3,000 to go to Ottawa for that. Follow-up question?
Yes. So, my question would be is, so, it's normal for an unelected official to represent the town as a delegate? I'm just confused. Like, I thought it was typically elected officials that meet with provincial leaders to advocate for community needs. I'm just a little surprised that it's staff. And then, secondly, what is the budget for staff, for training expenses, and workshops, and conferences? Like, what is the total budget for those items? I know that's probably to a different staff member, but I thought I asked both questions.
Yeah, so certainly, usually is common for staff to go with elected representative to them. And that's something that council may consider in deciding whether or not you wanted to send staff. I certainly don't, none of the issues are typically I certainly don't, none of the issues are typically urgent for us. There's some novel things that we could do, but we could also wait till after the conference and simply send letters to them, which would be sufficient. I don't know the exact budget for staff. I'd have to rely on, but we do have a further report coming forward to the, as directed by council on all training budgets for the finance committee. So we will certainly provide further details. I just know that it's, I didn't go to the previous conference this spring because I had a conflict, and that conference would have cost around $3,000. So there should be enough sufficient funds in there for me, and that's just my awareness of it. Sorry, Heather.
If I can add to that, usually I would go, because the county pays for my way. We just haven't, we just haven't finalized those items just yet, but I would plan to go. So yeah, if I weren't able to go, it still is, at the last AMO conference, for example, there were several delegations that were only staff. So it does happen. Have a follow-up.
Am I able to get that figure from the treasurer regarding, I'm sure, is she able to provide that?
Do you have those speakers?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just pulled up the budget for 2024. So if Andy went, it would be paid out of Department 121, which currently has tuition fees workshop training budget amount of $13,000.
Counselors Rozier.
Just that I'm opposed to this. I think it's firstly, not necessary, especially given the context of the report. And secondly, I feel like it's, doesn't make sense to me to send a staff member as a delegate opposed to an actual elected official.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, Worship. I think it's an advantage to keep these topics in front of the applicable ministries. And if we can do it at a relatively minimal cost, taking advantage of your accommodation, why wouldn't we utilize that opportunity?
I remind you, the resolution just calls for staff looking into being accepted as a delegation. We would actually have another look at approving this once we get an answer. It's also my belief that one does not need to enroll in the conference in order to have a delegation with ministers. So there would be no cost to the town in terms of, you know, the delegation, the cost to attend the conference itself. Anyway, the resolution just asks for a town looking into being accepted to send the delegation. I think that that's a wise thing to do, is to at least see, see if we are acceptable to go and get a delegation, and we can nail down the finals later. Further questions? Counselor Chapman.
Just a comment. If it's to see if we're accepted for a delegation, it doesn't mean that we actually have to follow through with it. So I say we should apply and see what happens.
Okay, thank you. Seeing nothing further, all those in favor? Opposed? One carried, thank you. Item, where are we? Item 7.8, Director of Emergency Services, Fire Chief, dealing with the community risk assessment. And I believe, I believe Chief McConan had to leave his enjoyment of fundraiser tonight to get here on time, so thank you and welcome. We have a resolution.
Yes. That report Fire 5-24 regarding community risk assessment 2024.
Moving second, there. Counselor Rahi and Counselor Ozlach. Chief McConan.
Thank you, Worship. Good evening, members of council. Actually, I was down at the graduation, Your Worship. We had two recruits graduate this evening, so I was down and presented them with their certificates and welcomed them to the Elmer Fire Department. So it was a good night. As everybody has seen, the community risk assessment identifies the fire hazards in our community. The Fire Department then takes this information, and we make certain that we can mitigate that risk through our training and equipment, such as we have through our high-rise fire hose training and the town's necessary requirement for an aerial fire truck apparatus on our large-story buildings. The risk assessment is regulated by the OFM to be done every five years, but we review it on the Elmer Fire Department yearly with staff. This also gives us compliance with the OFM for this year because it's due at the end of the month. So I'm pretty proud that we got that all done. And with saying that, I certainly have to thank our deputy clerk for all her hard work and assistance through this, through this document. She was a very vital part of the process, and I can't thank her enough for her expertise. You worship, any questions at this time? I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor, let's carry. Thank you. Is there any new business or matters of urgency? Reading of bylaws and proceedings there on, have a resolution?
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw 44-24, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on May 15, 2024, and bylaw 45-24, being a bylaw to amend bylaw 45-21, being a bylaw to regulate open air burning in the town of Elmer.
Moving second, there. Counselor Chapman and Counselor Ozlach. Any comments, questions, discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, carry. Thank you. Inquiries by members? Counselors Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just received information from the Green Municipal Fund regarding a new grant opportunity for municipalities for tree planting initiatives. It's up to 50% eligible in cost, up to a maximum of $10 million. I just wanted to inquire if we had any projects that could potentially benefit from that, or if we could look into this, if this is something of interest to the municipality.
Who wants to take that, Rob?
Certainly something we can look at and bring back to council.
I'm sure we'll, we'll apply for it if it meets any of the projects we currently have or find some new projects. Okay. Anything else? Statements and committee reports? Counselor Ozlach.
Your worship, tomorrow marks the 80th anniversary of D-Day. And where 14,000 Canadian troops landed on Juneau Beach. 2,800 troops died on Juneau Beach for our freedom, lest we forget.
Thank you. Anyone? Counselor Chapman.
For you, Your Worship. I just want to say that I attended a meeting for Planet Youth. If you're not familiar with Planet Youth, it's, it's proposed by the Social Weather and Public Health, and the purpose of it is to collect data from our youth in grades nine and 10 to see what some of the triggers are for drug and alcohol addiction and find ways to stop it at, to stop it from occurring. So this project is in process. They're, they're working on funding, and I will keep you up to date as it goes. And I also want to say thank you to all of our volunteers who participated in the Ball Memorial Cleanup and Planting on Monday. Counselor Rozier for helping with the, the physical work. Arthur for the plants. And Suzie's not here anymore, but it was nice that we had over 20 volunteers in the morning. And I don't know the number for the early afternoon, but it was a great turnout, and the gardens look much better.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, Worship. Several things. I'd like to thank Chief McConan and members of council for their common sense approach to passing the amendments to the open air burning bylaw. With the, the safe changes that the bylaw instill, up to 100 families are going to have the simple pleasure of being able to burn their supper. Thank you for that. To all of the, to the Kinsman Club, the sponsors of the kids minor soccer, the parents, and especially the kids. A couple of weeks ago, the, the team list were published in the paper of the literally hundreds of kids that are involved in minor soccer. It's just good to see that amount of participation. And if you're ever driving by on soccer night, you just wonder where all these kids and the parents in the cars come from. It's, it's great to see. A shout-out to the Elmer Express for their success in the 2023 Better Newspapers Contest. Two editorial first-place finishes in Best Business and Finance Story and the best front page. And Rob Perry got a second for Best Spot News Photo. Good to see the local paper voting well amongst the peers. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselors Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two things as well. One, it's been a while since I've been back at the table, so to go back in time, on April 27, we hosted the Women's Leadership Conference here in Elmer, and we had close to 120 women in attendance. So I just wanted to thank everyone that was involved with that, all the women that attended from Elgin County and outside of Elgin County as well. It was a great event and something that I think this municipality can really take pride in. Secondly, is on Friday, this Friday, starting at 11:00 a.m., is the East Elgin Secondary School Relay for Life, which is a fundraising event for the Canadian Cancer Society. I just wanted to make sure that council was aware and that the public was aware as well. The more that attend, the more that they can receive in donations and give to such a worthy cause. So I just wanted to make sure council is aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next item, report of the mayor. Usually, I don't report on ceremonial kinds of events that I go to, because I do go to a number of them, but for a number that happened last week that I didn't want to touch on, first of all, the St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital held their MRI fundraiser on Thursday. And as you're aware, the County of Elgin did not provide fundraising for the MRI. They decided not to do that. So it's even more important that people personally fundraise for the MRI at our local hospital, that you think it was a very, ever. Secondly, Edison Fest, Saturday, it was just Saturday, Saturday morning, last Saturday morning, which is a fest in Vienna. And one of our, one of our council members, actually Deputy Mayor Barber, won the log sawing contest. He did it in one minute and 20 seconds. I wouldn't mention this other than the fact that now Elmer has set the high bar for this kind of thing, so you can come back. On Saturday afternoon, there was the Royal Canadian Air Cadets Review, which is a group of young men, men and women between the ages of 12 and 18 who belong to the air cadets. And they do perform in Elmer, right? Arthur, they perform for the Remembrance Day and for the, I think, the Santa Claus Parade. A great group of disciplined young men and women. And finally, on Saturday night, there was the 75th anniversary of the Christian Reformed Church in Elmer, just to note that. Right? So, and thank you to Arthur for those plants, Arthur. Thank you very much. Are there any notices of motion? None? Meeting closed to the public, we have a resolution.
That council moves into a meeting closed to the public at 8:23 p.m. to discuss the following matters. Director of Legislative Services, report clerk 17-24, Police Service Board, Community Member Appointment, and that considerations of these items is closed to the public pursuant to Section 239.2b of the Municipal Act 2001, as the, as amended as the subject matter pertains to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
Moving second, there. Counselors Rozier and Counselor Rahi. All those in favor? Carry. We'll take a brief recess.